Thank you. Good afternoon. The meeting of the Sacramento City Council, sitting as the Sacramento Housing Authority, will please come to order with the court call the role, please, to establish quorum.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Kaplan.
Here.
Councilmember Tao.
Here.
Mayor Protem Talamontes.
Here.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Here.
Vice Mayor Maple.
Here.
Excuse me. Can we expect Councilmember Garrett momentarily? Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
Councilmember Vang.
Here.
I'm your Steinberg.
I am here. Mayor Protem Talamontes, would you please lead us in the land acknowledgement and the pledge of allegiance?
Please rise for the opening acknowledgements in honor of Sacramento's indigenous people and tribal lands. To the original people of this land, the Nisanom people, the Southern Maidu, Valley and Plains Miwok, Patwin-Wintune peoples, and the people of the Wiltorrantria, Sacramento's only federally recognized tribe. May we acknowledge and honor native people who came before us and still walk beside us today on these ancestral lands by choosing to gather together today in the act of practice of acknowledgement and appreciation for Sacramento's indigenous peoples' history, contributions, and lives. Thank you.
Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands one nation under God, indivisible, and just as it is. Thank you, Mayor Protem. Very good afternoon to everyone. From the public who may be watching or in the chambers, the city staff, the county staff I see here, and of course, the SHRA staff and my colleagues, we have a very, I think, positive agenda today. Long agenda, positive agenda, and let's get right to it. We have a consent calendar on the conflict of interest amendments. Do we have any public testimony on this?
I have one speaker on this item, Mr. McWorthy.
Good afternoon, panel. I'm asking the same question I asked about the consent calendar to other agendas. Were there any people from the republic when this was being discussed? Were there anybody to ask what is the conflict of interest? Had it ever been violated? We need to know that because we putting together some things. We need to know that. Why wasn't there people from the republic not there when you are changing or amending any policy at any level of government? What you got to hide? Educate children and public because they are very uneducated in this city. Things go through that they never take a look at. I don't know whether they are afraid or not. We don't know what it is. You need to stand up. But one thing we do know, nobody that's on city payroll speaks for nothing. They always agree. But what they agree to? Because their check. So we got to get away from that. Nobody from the private sector coming in and say anything on many of these hearings, which is not a real hearing. A hearing got two sides. What is this? A kangaroo court? Why we can't question some people here? When you start questioning, you're anti-Semitic. You got to come clear here on something because I'm under freedom of speech every time I come here. I'm under freedom of speech, and I won't continue.
Thank you for your comments, Mayor. I have no more speakers.
Sir, motion and a second on the consent calendar. So moved by Vice Mayor Maple, second by Councilmember Valenzuela. All in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed abstained. Very good. Let's move now to the discussion calendar. Let's begin with the update on the housing trust fund. Swickert, welcome.
Good afternoon, Christine Swickert. I believe we have a PowerPoint with this presentation. So today, I'm reviewing SHRA's annual report on city affordable housing funding and activities. The report covers three city ordinances, two state funding sources, and a federal source, which are home funds, all administered by SHRA for calendar year 2023. This report also provides an update to the city-county Affordable Housing Plan. This annual report is one of our methods to ensuring transparency during funding decisions. So the city has two development impact fees which benefit affordable housing, one for residential and another for non-residential development. The revenues generated depend upon the fee levels per square foot of new construction and the amount of building which occurs in any given year. The city Housing Trust Fund ordinance authorizes the collection of impact fees on non-residential construction to fund low and very low income housing. The Housing Trust Fund ordinance was adopted in 1989, and to date, over $39 million has been collected, along with $15 million in repayments of loans, creating over 700 units with another 400 and 42 units under construction.
Excuse me. Can you distinguish, please, right from the get-go? Because I think it is important between the Housing Trust Fund ordinance and the Mixed-Income Ordinance, because both generate funds for housing. And I think as you're talking about this, it's important to distinguish, and also maybe to distinguish between timeframes, because the Mixed-Income Ordinance was changed back in 2015, and I think... Thank you.
Yes, absolutely. This slide is on the Housing Trust Fund and ordinance. The next one, I'll go over in a minute, is the Mixed-Income Housing Ordinance. But yes, this one's been around since 1989. It's been around a very long time. It is, again, a fee on commercial development. So anything non-residential, basically. There's fees on office construction, retail, other commercial space. So that's why we've been able, with this ordinance, to produce, you know, over 3,700 units, because it's been around for over 40 years. And this fund, the Housing Trust Fund, generates between $300,000 and $2 million annually. In 2023, it generated about $370,000 in fees were collected. And then I'll, to answer the mayor's question, I'll go to the Mixed-Income Housing Ordinance. This is the ordinance for affordable housing impact fees on new residential development. So new subdivisions, new multifamily developments that are market rate with a goal of increasing the supply of, again, for, available for low-income workers. $9.8 million has been collected in this, through this ordinance, since its revision in 2015, creating over 300 units with another 500 under construction. In 2023, the fees generated were $2.4 million. And typically, we see about between $500 and $2 million generated a year, so a little more in this calendar year than in the past. Did that answer your question, Mayor?
Yes.
Okay. But I should say, together, those two ordinances generate about $2.8 million in local funds. So there are two State of California funding sources we received in 2023, the Permanent Local Housing Allocation, or PLHA, and the State's Local Housing Trust Funds. And SHRA administers these funds on behalf of the city. So PLHA funds are generated through a recording fee on real estate transactions. 20% of the fees must be reserved for single-family down payment assistance, and the remaining are used for multifamily affordable projects. This slide, I noticed just before I presented, it has a little bit, the numbers are a little bit off. The $2.3 million in this slide is what we collected in 2022. In 2023, we actually collected $3.6 million in fees. But additional fees are anticipated next year, and over 200 units are currently under construction with use of these fees. The Local Housing Trust Funds are state matching funds that are applied for on a very competitive basis. In 2023, SHRA applied for and received $5 million. Today's state, which, that was the maximum we could apply for. Today's staff is recommending $3.6 million of these funds be allocated to Central Sacramento Studios Phase Two, along with the city Housing Trust Funds that service a match, but you'll hear about that later. So SHRA administers several federal grants on behalf of the city, and home funds are used for multifamily housing production and preservation. These funds have hard deadlines for expenditures, and it's critical that we identify income-eligible or eligible projects that we never have to return any of the funds to the federal government. City Home generated $2.7 million, with $670,000 in loan repayments in 2023. There are currently four projects under construction utilizing home funds. So together, in 2023, the five funding sources I just reviewed totaled $14.2 million, with additional funds generated from loan repayments. Loan repayments allow SHRA to reinvest in much-needed affordable housing. However, only projects that have the ability to make loan repayments due, typically permanent supportive housing projects, do not have the ability to make payments, so they're often structured to 0% loans, interest loans, due and payable at the term of the loan. So the city's Single Family Occupancy Ordinance is also reported in this report annually. SHRA is required to provide an annual update on the number of residential hotel units downtown that are either withdrawn or the number of units constructed annually. In 2023, I'm happy to report that the rehabilitation of the 89-unit Sequoia Hotel is now under construction, leaving only two hotels, the Congress, which is 27 units, and the Golden, 26 units, with unrestricted units subject to this ordinance. In addition, units at Capital Park and Central Sac Studios came online in 2023 to increase the number of SRO units downtown. So the city and county of Sacramento entered into a partnership agreement in 2022 to improve coordination on homeless activities. The agreement required the preparation of an affordable housing plan to analyze the loans and set goals. The Affordable Housing Plan was developed with community input and approved by the Board of Supervisors and City Council in October 2023. There are two sections of the plan, first being permanent supportive housing and the second being rehousing. For permanent supportive housing, the targeted, measurable target was to create 300 permanent supportive housing units and 100 affordable housing units annually. In 2023, that goal was exceeded by creating 372 units of permanent supportive housing and 262 units of affordable housing. Thanks in large part to the leadership of the city council, these new permanent supportive housing units contributed to the 30% increase in permanent supportive housing units since 2022, or 2020, as referenced in the Sacramento Steps Forward Recent Point in Time Count Report. Oops. One more thing. Other goals, such as updating zoning, development partnerships, and other activities are on various stages of implementation, as outlined in the report. For rehousing, the goal is 220 rehousing slots per year be created, along with 29 new full-time case managers. A gap analysis and identification of funding needs and resources is underway to meet this goal, in addition to establishing standards and performance metrics and other analysis. So with that, that concludes my presentation. I'm available to answer any questions you might have. I also have other representatives for Sacramento Steps Forward, I believe, the county, the city, if you have any other questions.
I know I have a few comments, but let's see if we've got public testimony.
I have one speaker on this item, McWorthy.
People on this trust fund, when I started here, the city only had about $500,000 in the trust fund. Now, what I'm saying to you, and I hope soon I can say it to the government when we change hands in Washington, D.C., freeze all state funds until we get an outside audit of where this money have gone to. We got too many people siphoning off to housing, and we not getting no units. That's a problem there. The city and state is in the bed with each other. We need an outside audit, and I urge them to freeze all state funds coming into this state, not only Sacramento. When it become a state that didn't respect the Constitution, that's the time to freeze it. And my speech, my comments, because this is not a hearing, is under the freedom of speech, because this is not a hearing. We're going to question that once we get enough to go where we were going from this step.
Mayor, I have no more speakers on this item.
All right, let's turn it over then to the housing authority members. Councilmember Kaplan?
Thank you, Mayor. Christine, just a quick question. You know, you glanced over it, but I think pause, because this can, is, can be and is a really successful program for the single-family down payment assistance that is provided through the city's Permanent Local Housing Allocation Program. You know, one, what is the maximum amount families can receive? How many families got funding in 2023? And how is, how is it determined who gets funding? Like, what areas of the city qualify?
Right, sure. It's the down payment assistance. Last year was our first year, because the first time we received the funding sources. But families making up to 50,000, well, families that meet the income requirements, I believe it's 80% of area median income, they are eligible to receive up to $50,000 of down payment assistance through the program. It is advertised on our website. We do, do send out lists or announcements to folks. We actually get quite a lot of interest in this program. If we had more money, I think it would even get more. But we provided five loans in 2023. I'm sure we're doing a lot more. I know we are doing more this year. Yeah, so that, it's a very, it's a good program.
So how do we determine who gets the loans and what areas qualify?
We have a map, which I could provide absolutely. It's lower-income neighborhoods that are eligible, and the, it's pretty much first come, first served. Basically, if you have a project or a home you're buying and you're closing on that loan, you know, we process them as quickly as we get them.
Okay. Just because I know the five families, just something for you to celebrate, Councilmember Vang, all of them were in your district. So the five families that did get the grants were all in Council District Eight, but I think it's something incumbent upon us, as we all have low-income areas in, in all of our neighborhoods, that we would hope to, to benefit all, all parts of the city for those looking for single first-time down payment assistance. So would you mind, or having staff mind at least send to me where the application? And is it going to continue this year?
Yes, absolutely. We, at least 20% of the PLHA funds have to go for that. So yes, absolutely. And I will absolutely, I can send, send something to all the council members. I think that's a good, great idea.
Thank you.
Do you have any other members that want to make comments? I have a couple. I just want the council and the community to focus on, in some ways, how much we're doing with so few resources. As a compliment to SHRA and all of our housing partners here, but it begs another point, because you, when you really look at the numbers around how much money these locally-generated housing trust funds are, are actually making, it isn't much money, given the need. In fact, it's, it's pennies, really, on the, the dollar that we need in order to dramatically increase our production. And so I know that we've discussed, and I hope that before I leave office, that we can have a more robust discussion about the Mixed-Income Housing Ordinance, if not a decision, recognizing the economic times and the high interest rates and all that, but also looking at different ways to create anything that is at least close to a area-wide production standard, and to have the, the finance, and to have the more capital to be able to make that happen. And secondly, it's predictable, you know, I think what I'm going to say next, which is that I just urge the, the leaders, the future, current and future leaders here, to look to the ballot in 2026 and beyond, as you put together the next countywide infrastructure measure. It was Measure A or Measure B, or whatever it was, exclusively focused on transportation. Now, transportation is key and must continue to be an essential element of anything we do countywide, but the next measure must include housing. It must include housing infrastructure. It must include direct supports and subsidies for more workforce and affordable housing, because this ain't getting it. The amount of monies that are being generated, because there's, there's too much need. Okay, so that's the challenge. But the good news, I, I think, if we don't use this forum to talk a little bit publicly about the point in time count, Ms. Bates is sitting back there, and, and all of the city and county partners, including SHRA, then we're missing an opportunity here. You heard me last week and others, Councilmember Valenzuela, others have spoken to this. There's no, we're not celebrating ultimate victory here. Of course not. There, there's too many people in need and still too many of the hardest-to-serve people that, that, that are still out there. And yet, the objective evidence says that the numbers are going in the right direction. And what's more important than that overall number is the underlying data. The fact that the city and county together have increased temporary housing 84%. 84%. Did I say 84%? Since 2020. The fact that we've increased permanent supportive housing by 29%, nearly 30% over the same timeframe. And those are only some of the capacity-related indicators. So imagine what we could do if we made housing infrastructure in terms of countywide priority, city and countywide priority in terms of a ballot measure, the priority that it should be. We'd get to the next 41% and beyond, because we still have people who are wanting and waiting. And of course, it includes the services as well. But this was a very hopeful week last week in terms of the direction, in terms of our work together, and, and is a roadmap for where we need to continue to go and to elevate to help those who still are suffering. Sad to use this moment to say all of that. Thank you. Okay, let's move to the next item. This is the, I'm sorry, I'm moving to the one-year action plan. This is the CDBG issue.
Hello, my name is Stephanie Green. I'm the Federal Programs Manager here at SHRA. Today's presentation will be the second workshop for the 2025 Annual Action Plan and the five-year Consolidated Plan for Federal Block Grants administered on behalf of the city by SHRA. The action plan and consolidated plan process started back in February with workshop number one. Following that, SHRA met with city staff to identify potential projects for funding and reviewed them for readiness and eligibility. We also received and reviewed project suggestions from council members. The purpose of today's workshop will be to present the list, the draft list of potential infrastructure and public facility projects for Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG, funding for the 2025 action plan. And we will also receive input on those and also new ideas for activities. Before we discuss the action plan, I'll provide an update on the five-year consolidated planning As we discussed at workshop one, SHRA is in the process of updating its consolidated plan, which is a HUD requirement for the receipt of federal housing and community development block grants. The consolidated plan covers a five-year planning period and identifies community needs and establishes long-term strategies to meet those needs. Those strategies inform the annual action plans over the next five years. Currently, SHRA is working with our consultant, Root Policy, to undertake community engagement to identify those priorities for the consolidated plan. As part of this community engagement, SHRA held a public hearing at the second action plan workshop at the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Commission on May 15. Root Policy has also been administering stakeholder focus groups and planning pop-ups or tabling at local community events, focusing primarily on low- to moderate-income areas. For the community events, we've received location ideas from you and have also been working on incorporating those into our schedule. The community events will wrap up around mid-July. In addition, a community and stakeholder community needs survey has been released, which will be open until June 30. The QR code on the current slide provides a link to that survey. It's geared towards both residents and individuals working in the fields of housing and community development. We encourage everyone to share this survey with your friends, family, and coworkers. Everyone who participates in the survey is entered into a drawing to receive a $100 Visa gift card. The draft consolidated plan will be finalized by August, and there will be a 30-day public comment period starting in mid-August. The plan will be revised, if needed, based on any comments received, and the final plan will be adopted in October, along with the action plan. For the 2025 Annual Action Plan, we've estimated the 2025 CDBG allocations and identified a proposed list of projects for funding. This slide shows that we anticipate about $4.7 million in CDBG funding available in 2025 for the city. However, after preparing this presentation, we did identify an additional $300,000 in funds from prior program savings. The CDBG funds are allocated among the various programs shown here. Generally, we reserve the maximum of 15% of the entitlement for public services and about 20% for grant planning and admin. From there, we work backwards to identify available funds for public facilities and infrastructure, as well as housing projects. A little, little over $1 million will go to housing programs, and the remainder, along with that additional funding identified previously, will go to the infrastructure and public facilities projects. This slide shows the draft list of projects for the 2025 action plan. This list was developed based on projects proposed by both city staff and council members as of mid-April. Excuse me. All projects listed here have been assessed for eligibility and readiness. These projects include the Nino's Park Playground Equipment Installation Project, Dos Rios Housing Site Rehabilitation, Colonial Park Restroom Rehab, and the 24th Street Bypass Park Exercise Equipment Project. And we always set aside funds for environmental review for projects as well. We also received a few additional project requests following development of this PowerPoint, which would be paid for with the previously mentioned cost savings that had been identified. The first project is an ADA Walkway Improvement Project at Argonaut Park in District Five for $150,000. The second is, will either be a shade structure and park bench installation project at Robla Park in District Two for $150,000, or we are also reviewing the possibility of design for the restroom at Robla Park. However, we do need to identify funding for project construction in future years. Lastly, for District Six, we're reviewing the request for restrooms at the Earl Warren Finally, excuse me, this slide shows an overview of the action plan and consolidated plan process moving forward. As mentioned, this is a draft list of projects, and over the next few months, we'll continue to meet with city staff and refine the list as needed. Then in October, we'll return to you with that final list of projects and for final action plan approval. Concurrently with the action plan, as mentioned, we'll continue to conduct community outreach for the consolidated plan, which will be finalized in August and adopted along with the action plan in October. That concludes my presentation. I'm open to questions.
Thank you very much. No testimony? Let's take it to the members. Councilman Gata?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. First, thank you again, and thanks to SHRA for the presentation and for, you know, the, the process in developing all the different needs with CDBG funds. And first, you know, I do want to thank for them on some of the prior District Six improvements that related directly to safety, looking at crosswalks, intersections. We unfortunately had had some fatalities, and I think it's a bigger issue in our efforts in active transportation. So on, on that side, I think it's important for us to, to be looking at some of those projects. On the park side, though, and I do think, you know, our parks are another central amenity that, that needs to, that we need to focus on. One, I, very, also very excited also to see the, the Nino's Parkway part, project on a playground. I mean, that's a, an exciting opportunity next to community gardens in an area that, you know, I'm familiar with. It's not my district, but I'm very happy for that community there. And, and hopefully, the next phase will be figuring out how you actually can get some bathrooms in that area. Which brings me to my principal point. One, thanks for including the Colonial Heights bathroom and looking at the Earl Warren bathrooms. You know, for anyone who has little kids, and these playgrounds have little kids, Colonial, toddler and tot playgrounds, the expectation that little kids are going to make it home to wherever they are, even if they're a local neighborhood park, is unrealistic. And, and I, I think it's important that we start figuring out how we actually start thinking of our, our parks and our facilities there to help those small families and small kids. I mean, that, I, that is a, I got to say, one of the deficiencies in our overall city is the fact that we don't have clean and available restaurants. And, and most of the times, like in Earl Warren and Colonial, the restrooms have been locked up for many, many years and are only opened at specific times. So thank you, one. I think I'm very happy to see that we're allocating funding for Colonial Park, particularly because there's a, a tot pool there, and you... And you, as anybody knows, you want our kids to go to the bathroom before they go into the water. So, you know, we're in the in the potty phasing phase for our youngest. And it's it's an important thing to to remind them. But but this goes to the point that if, you know, should we, most of these facilities are cookie cutter. They're the the same facilities. So should we not be looking at maybe, you know, if we're doing Robla, which is great, if we're doing Colonial, it's great. Why not look at seeing if 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 the, there's a, an economy of scale and a way to be able to. Look for a larger allocation so that we can get more bathrooms all at once. And many of our communities here, folks are are walking or biking. They may not have a vehicle. So again, the expectation that people are going to go home for that, for families with little kids is just unrealistic. So, one, I wanted to highlight that. Very excited about the suggestions here in this round of of allocations. But I'd like to figure out how we actually work more on on those improvements. And, you know, Danny Nun Park is another one where I I think that needs some support out there. But at the very least, those that have bathrooms that have been closed down because they've been built since the fifties. And now, why not, those have already got sewer and water lines. Let's figure out how to get those off the ground. And open for young families to be able to accept. So with that, thanks again for the the work here and congrats to also the other projects and that are in the pipeline here. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to the staff again.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Again, I also want to thank the staff for this wonderful report, putting things together and for also educating. Myself and my team because even though this is now my second year going into this, I still feel like I'm I'm learning the ropes. So appreciate walking us through, you know, how to submit projects and and communicating with us openly. I was a little scared when I first saw the the graph. Didn't include anything in D five despite the fact that my district is basically all yellow on this map. But really grateful to hear that the ADA walkway at Argonaut is included as a part of that consideration. And so just glad to hear that. And I know that there are other projects that'll be discussed as well. I know we've submitted other ones as well, but I just thank you for for considering us and some of the needs that we have in District Five. And then I had a question on the housing development and preservation dollars. That's about a million dollars. Do do you have a breakdown of what those are going to be used for? Or is that still something that that's being considered?
So that goes to develop or rehab existing housing. And so we set that aside. Set that aside. I'm sorry for Christine's group. Do you want to take that?
Yeah, primarily two activities are funded out of that. The first being we have a, at the agency, we have a. Emergency rehabilitation program for income qualified homeowners that need some emergency work done. Maybe that's a. Air conditioning that's gone out or, you know, a roof that's leaking. So that program, and I'm I'm sorry, I cannot remember the dollar amount per home. Is it a hundred thousand dollars per home? Maybe it's not that high. Maybe it's only fifty.
I think it's like fifty thousand.
I think it's fifty after I said that. Yeah, fifty thousand. So we set some money aside for that program. And it is a grant program. And then we do set aside money for for some multifamily projects. So some of these home keys that you've seen, Capital Park later on your agenda, we're going to be requesting some of these housing dollars for rehabilitation go to Capital Park. So those are the two primary uses.
Oh, got it. So it's basically kept in a fund and then as as projects come up and or have needs, then you're able to tap that. That makes a lot of sense. And I think that's really great, having that flexibility because we all know with all these projects, things inevitably go wrong or end up costing more money or just have needs. Okay, well, that's it for me then. I just really appreciate the work on this and looking forward to seeing all the wonderful projects that will come from it.
Absolutely. Mayor Protim. Did I? Not on purpose.
Go ahead, Councilmember Tao.
Councilmember Tao, sorry.
Yeah, thank you for the report. You know, one concern I had was that, you know, in the staff report, it says that. Bathroom at Robla Parks is not in high demand. But then I I do, you know, we have to be cognizant that the bathroom, Robla Park is a really big park and a lot of people use, the community uses it. I know the community association has been pushing for a restroom clubhouse model. But I truly believe that it starts with a restroom. And then it grows into the clubhouse and eventually that. I I feel that, you know, with with the current proposal and and I spoke to city staff. Parks on why we weren't able to construct a restroom a couple of years ago because the association wasn't behind it. But I really spoke to the association and I really felt their concern. Their concern is that if we were to put a restroom there. And this is from disinvestment in the community for forty, fifty years now that they see. They they say that because if we were to put a restroom there, then, you know, the clubhouse will never be there because the city would just forget about them. And I I just want city staff to commit to that, hey, we can put a restroom here. And then we can still look for, looking at a clubhouse being built here in the park eventually. We shouldn't deprive our residents who uses the park for soccer tournaments, for events. To use porta potties over and over and over and over again and have that delay. And, you know, I think the sanitation is a big issue. But I would truly want to encourage city staff as well to definitely looking and making this project feasible for the area. As well as looking into setting up a CIP fund for eventual clubhouse with restrooms in addition.
Good feedback. Thank you so much. Now, as it comes, Mayor Protim Talmontis.
Who's mayor? I also just thank you so much to SHRA and to Jason from our Parks Department who's here. For including Ninos Park Playground enhancements and lighting in the area for this round of CDBG funding. Just so that everyone knows, like, the neighbors outside that live in the neighborhood right now are scared to go outside right now after dark. Just because of the high amount of crime, casings, drug dealing, just a lot of issues that are going out, that's going on, that are going on right there in the neighborhood. So increasing lighting and visibility for people to feel safe to go outside is going to go such a long way in my community. Right now, about forty-two percent of residents on the block are under the age of eighteen, above the citywide and statewide average of twenty-three percent. So this is a massive investment in people, in safety, there will be, and success in life. Thank you so much.
Excellent. Councilmember Kaplan.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to add in support for the comments that Councilmember Guerra and Tao said. While I know there is somewhat of a difference opinion with the community association, I can tell you, I talk to moms. Moms will not go to that park because that park does not have a restroom or it has a porta potty. Families have asked me, because my district borders it, can you put a restroom there? It it helps us. We want to have sports things, but we're paying for porta potties. Which that is in a very low income area and they can't afford that extra amount for porta potties. I will tell you as a mom, I only went to parks that had bathrooms. Otherwise, my kid was peeing in a bush. It just, it's the standard. And I think that's the difference sometimes when community association may be more adult focused, first family and kid focused. That we really need to look at and get permanent restrooms out there. So I throw my full support behind getting getting permanent restrooms out at Robla. Thank you.
I think I agree. Permanent restrooms, that's like basic.
Plus, it's a community park.
Yeah.
Supposed to have restrooms.
This is a community.
Yeah, the whole association was created for the community park, Robla Park Community Association. And my father was actually one of the first community members of that association with Mary Ann and Leo Luhon. And it was to advocate for the park.
So what's the action step now, given the feedback?
So we definitely will be taking another look at Robla Park and working with Jason Weisman. I'm sorry, we definitely will be taking another look at Robla Park and we will be working with Jason Weismans, who's here, who can help answer some questions if needed. So we'll be working with city staff to try to identify how we can move forward with the Robla Park project.
Great. It's the basics. Thank you so much. Do this is not a action item today. But thank you. We look forward to what, two more? We have two more hearings on this. One more.
One more.
Okay. Very good. Thank you so much. Okay, we now move to the next item, which is the City of Refuge item, item five. That's what I meant. I was, I want to see who's alert around here.
Good afternoon, Mayor and councilmembers.
Item four. Go ahead, sorry.
Good afternoon, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Whitney Hinton. I'm the Program Manager in Development Finance and Portfolio Management at SHRA. Staff has requested approval of seven point eight million dollar loan commitment for the new construction of Central Sac Studios Phase Two. The Sutter House Motel located eleven hundred Eighth Street was rehabilitated into Central Sacramento Studios Phase One. A permanent supportive housing project with ninety-two units for formerly homeless residents. The project opened in November two thousand and twenty-three. The project, the proposed new construction project is the second phase of the project. Post demolition of the former vacant restaurant, the project will entail a mid-rise five story building with fifty-two units in total. Including thirty-five studios, seventeen one bedrooms at thirty percent of area median income, and there will be one manager's unit. Amenities on site will include a lounge, multipurpose room, fitness room, bicycle storage, community kitchen, laundry room on each floor, a dog park and roof terrace. Parking spaces and other amenities such as the pool will be will be shared between the two phases. Additionally, the project is a homeless development with fifty-one project based vouchers awarded. The project will be funded with a loan, tax credits, solar credits and SHRA funding. Danko Communities developed the first phase of the project and is developer for the second phase. SHRA has approved Danko Property Management as the property manager who will service a twenty-four hour desk coverage for both sites. Lutheran Social Services, or LSS, will be the resident service provider for the project. That will provide fifteen hours of resident services, which will include development support, education classes and job search assistance. LSS will also be providing supportive services with three full time equivalent case managers. To provide a targeted services to the formerly homeless individuals. In closing, staff is recommending approval of the loan commitment of seven point eight million dollars for the new construction of Central Sac Studios Phase Two. And staff is available to answer any questions you may have.
All right, this is great. This is great news. Do we have testimony on this?
I have two speakers on this item, Alexander Hampton and McWorthy.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Mayor. My name is Alexander Hampton. I am a field representative for the North Cal Carpenters, Local Forty-Six here in Sacramento. I've also been a resident of Sacramento for forty-five years. My high school is Luther Burbank. I've watched this city grow and it's amazing how things change through years. Okay. The goals for a construction worker are pretty simple. When we get on projects, we definitely. Want apprenticeship. Apprenticeship is for the future. You know, you're always building for the future. You know, to keep that work going, that 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 worker will always learn from a journeyman and move on to the next stage. Healthcare, that's that's key. Everybody needs healthcare because it's so expensive without it. I don't know how people can survive without it. That's that's. Oh, that's a big problem here. Prevailing wage, prevailing wage is is a decent wage that we can pay our bills. Local hire, we keep everything here in Sacramento, which is very key. And that's why I can provide my family and take care of my mother. And compliance, we need rules on these job sites so these crime scenes can stop happening. Okay, we as, we we ask council for this project, Central Sacramento Studios Phase Two. That labor standards should be on this project. We also ask council, will prevailing wage be on this project? This project will not just benefit the community that lives in it, but also. It will benefit the workers that build it. And that's key. You know, we got to protect these workers and they deserve the best for, you know, breaking their backs, man, on this field. It's it's very tough work and they need the best of care.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
Thank you very much.
It's a prevailing wage project.
Yes. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
McWorthy.
Is it only a loan and grants y'all think about? Let's talk about some creation of things from the people that here that owns the house. Equity instead of race equity. Equity in that property. Equity in that property at fifty thousand dollars per house with paper all this garbage you're talking about. Then if you, when they change from gas to electrical, they ain't gonna have the money to fix that house, will they? But if you put a dollar in their pocket now, I'll set a plan up. That when you change from gas to electrical, we will put a lien against your property and we'd pay for it when it's sold. Think, people, think. Get off your ass and think. Think ahead of time. You have people be put outdoors just for saying you're going to change from gas to electrical. Because you only think of a grant and a loan. Who gonna pay these money back? The people gonna be paying this money back. If you get a loan, tell them the interest they're gonna pay back on that loan. They can do the figuring themselves. If it's a grant, do they have to pay it back or do they have to pat you on the back?
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, I have no more.
Thank you. Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you. This is a very exciting second phase to the already wildly successful first phase of this project. So I want to thank not just Danko as the project developers, but obviously the SHRA team and everybody who's involved. For folks who are familiar with the site, this is the site of the old Blue Lamp Restaurant, which is not up to code. I think originally we were hoping to be able to use it for some services on site, but when you got in there, there was all these issues. So they're going to be demoing that to build fifty-two additional units on site for more permanent housing that will be protecting folks. I'm really excited that this is a prevailing wage project. So hopefully, my colleagues will support it today and moving the item forward right now and asking for your yes vote. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. I mean, it's just consistent with this drive we've been talking about to increase. The number of permanent supportive housing units in the city. And this is what it takes, one big project at a time. It's great. Thank you. What's that? The old blue lamp, yeah. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Oppose, abstain. Thank you. That passes. Now we move to the City Refuge item, which is item number five. Who's presenting on this one?
Hello again, Christine Weichert, SHRA. Today, we're seeking approval to enter into an agreement with the City of Refuge to assist with development and funding for an affordable housing project. The City of Refuge is a nonprofit with offices at Oak Park. Their mission is to support people living in the marginalized communities and to empower transformation. They currently offer housing, youth programs and operate a resource center. The City of Refuge has acquired vacant lots next to their offices located MLK Boulevard and Seventh Avenue. Their plan is to build a mixed use facility that will provide affordable housing, workforce development and childcare for homeless families. The state recently allocated eight million dollars to finance the project with at least ten percent of those funds to be allocated to SHRA. Develop a funding and expenditure plan. The plan will include construction and operating budgets, pre-development analysis and expertise and affordable housing development. The City of Refuge is required to expand the state funds in accordance with the plan to provide expenditure reports to SHRA. Staff seeking authorization to execute an agreement with City of Refuge and we're available to answer any questions you may have.
Vice Mayor Maple.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'm really excited for this project. So I just want to thank the staff, thank the SHRA team and everyone who's been a part of this. You know, this, the idea started a long time ago with Rochelle Dipmore and City of Refuge and all of the wonderful work that they do in Oak Park community for over twenty years now. Working with women and children in particular. And I remember it was about, I guess, a year and a half ago now. When the governor and the first partner came to visit their their facility on MLK. And they had a big easel up with a rendering and they said, this is our vision. And and they sat down with her and they talked for for a long time. And then shortly after that is when our state Senator, Angelique Ashby, got engaged and was able to work with the governor's office to get this eight million dollars secured. To start the beginning phases of this project, which is so badly needed in our community in Oak Park. And these are two lots. I know we get surrounded by the community center. We have, you know, Station Six of the fire department. We've got the Arbor Senior Housing. So it's just an amazing space to create an opportunity for women and children in particular to have a space. And so I think a lot about, you know, if you drive by right now, there's a big sign up and it says, Wonder. And it really makes me wonder, you know, what what's possible there. And I think we're starting to see the beginning of that. And the other. And the other thing that I wanted to, to bring up is, again, Rochelle Dipmore, who helps run the organization, she often talks about, what does it look like when we create spaces for children? Not just spaces that kids can be in or that they're tolerated in, but what if you have a space where it's designed around them, right, and they feel welcomed and, and loved? And, and I know that that's the vision for this space too, and it's really badly needed because we have a lot of wonderful young people in Oak Park that, that need such a space. So I just wanted to call those things out and say that this is truly an active partnership between so many different agencies, and excited that SHRA will be on board to help guide this project, because I think it's gonna be a wonder for our neighborhood, so thank you.
Wonderful. Councilmember Kaplan.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree, Councilmember Maple, that, you know, this is something that the City of Refuge has been, has been talking about and wondering for quite a while. However, I've, I've heard from Ms. Dipmore some concerning information, because I know when they first got the, the grant of the money, entering into a contract with SHRA was, was not part of it, but legislation was put in for that requirement. Ms. Dipmore did indicate that they had called the state and said the state can have the money back, because the project then becomes infeasible with the spending 10% of the money with SHRA, which was not part of it. She has indicated that they are hoping to renegotiate with SHRA to even see if they can save the project, because the $800,000 was not planned. And that is the status of, of the information that she has let me know now, is they're trying to renegotiate with SHRA. So I don't feel comfortable voting on this today, since I have heard from the City of Refuge, that this is not something that, you know, they supported with the reassessment or re, renew requirement from the state that SHRA should be mandated on this. So it does cause me some concern of where is the miscommunication on, on all of this? So I don't know if you've heard differently or what, what SHRA has on this.
What do we, here for Ms. Dozier for a moment here, go ahead.
So.
Get the green right there.
There we go. So we've had discussions with Senator Ashby. That was always her intent in terms of the use of the funds. The clarifying language was something that came out of her office, so that she would feel comfortable that the state funds were going to be spent in accordance with, you know, just your normal oversight, and also to provide a level of assistance to the City of Refuge. One of the things that we've also made very clear is that even though it's, it's a minimum of $800,000, that is not necessarily exactly how much money will be spent. That'll be used to help with the consultants who need to guide the process, and if there's money that is not spent, as we do on any other project, it goes into the project, you know, so this is, you know, kind of our normal standard operating procedure, and we've had discussions about that. This is new to me, that they want to send the money back. I, I have not heard that from the Dipmores, have you, Christine, in your conversations?
Has anybody communicated with the district council member about this concern, Ms. Dipmore or anybody, I don't know, if you had a chance to talk to the, but I mean, it's her district, and this is a surprise, I assume, to you, correct?
So Rochelle has had some conversations about, like, concerns, but I certainly don't believe that I've heard from her that she would not accept the money, so that's news to me.
I just got the communication, the concerns, and then trying to renegotiate this, so I, I, I apologize, I had assumed.
It's now in the state law, right? So I don't know if there's anything that we can negotiate here from the dais, so.
I, I'm gonna pop in if I might here for a moment. First of all, and Rochelle's not here, I mean, and we all love Rochelle and Lauren, but why aren't they here? I mean, if there was a problem, they should be in the chambers. They come for other, they come for other purposes. This is an $8 million grant that a lot of organizations, frankly, would love to have directed towards them. I mean, really? A lot of nonprofits really hurting out there that would love $8 million. And by the way, one of the advantages of having SHRA involved in this is that the opportunity here is to capitalize $8 million to make it much more. I talked to Christine Weichert, for example, two days ago about the potential of applying for tax credits, which is, and with an $8 million down payment, a gift, you, they'd be much more eligible to get millions of dollars in tax credits. And so I just, I'm a little troubled because they're not here, number one, and number two, $8 million? Where, where resources are really scarce for a very worthy project and very worthy organization. But let's try to work this out and see how we can take the $8 million and make it $16, or $20 million and do something even grander. That's what, that would be my suggestion. Eric?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was gonna say, well, first of all, I will say, it's not the first time we've heard concerns about the costs when it comes to SHRA and oversight. I think, I think that, I mean, those are valid questions and concerns, but I think for this action today, this authorizes us to be able to have the money and have the flexibility to move forward. So I, I would suggest that the council, you know, vote in support of this today, and if there are issues, I mean, the, the applicant always has the opportunity to deny the funds. I mean, just because of our action doesn't, doesn't preclude them from making the appropriate business decision in the future. And, and if, and since this was kind of basically dictated by the state legislature, that conversation needs to happen at, at that level as well. I do want to, you know, take this time to congratulate, you know, Rochelle and her team and all the work that, that, that has gone on in this project, and, you know, I drive down MLK and, and the Stockton and Broadway area, and seeing the, the work that they've done to, to help that community, they are located in District Five, but the fact that they're helping, you know, our, our, our broader Stockton and Broadway corridor has been impactful, and they, and they came, and I do, I want to thank them for their, their initial start to get us going with support for the families that are at the Greens Motel. They've done a lot, it's part of our coalition of providers for victims of domestic violence, and, and during the pandemic, I think they really stepped up to help bring, you know, with the other partners to bring some unity to be able to make sure that Sacramento was the first to allocate and identify the need for, you know, women and children and families who needed help when it came to domestic violence as part of our federal funding. So, you know, this is a, a, a big step forward, and I want to just congratulate them on this effort, but I, I will support the, the motion today, and I'm glad to engage in any other way as, as possible.
Give Vice Mayor Maple the courtesy of making a motion here, and then I'll turn it over. Thank you. Moved, seconded by Councilmember Guetta, Councilwoman Jennings.
I think Councilmember Guerra said much of what I wanted to say. I, I would be shocked, I appreciate the information that came forth today, but I would be shocked without having them here, not here today, that this is an item that is, that we should pull and not vote on it. So my recommendation is much like Councilmember Guerra's, and I want to support that and support the council member whose district it's in, and until we get additional information, I want to continue to move forward with the agenda that's on the table today.
Very good, we've got. Councilmember Valenzuela, then Kaplan, go ahead.
Thank you, yeah, I want to echo what my colleagues just said. I used to live on 7th Avenue, three doors down from this project, and when you think about transformative projects and what this means for District Five, I just want to congratulate the Vice Mayor and everybody and the Senator who made this money happen. It's not surprising to me that folks might be frustrated that they have to give up part of something they thought they'd have, but I, I want to respect the fact that we're all hearing this secondhand, with all respect to my colleague. Rochelle Dipmore has my personal information, I know she has the information of our council member and others as well. I'm very hesitant to taint what should be a celebratory moment with the debate with the stakeholders not here present, given the non-binding nature of this grant agreement. I want to focus on the positive, which is, this is $8 million that we didn't have that is going to a really important project for a really worthwhile organization in a community that could not deserve it more, so I want to make sure that is the note that we leave this on, and I'm enthusiastically planning to support this item. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kaplan.
Thank you. My apologies, I thought it had already been communicated, I was under the impression that that was. Ms. Dipmore said, you know, I want to support, you know, this project, I think it should happen, you know, my, my concern was, you know, doing things that would make this project not happen, you know, that, and that really is, how do we work on this? And Ms. Dipmore said that she will try and renegotiate the contract with SHRA, and I think what you meant, Ms. Dozier, was that the $800,000 is the maximum, not the minimum? Or the $800,000 is the minimum?
Oh, I'm already.
Go ahead, just go ahead.
No, the way the legislation reads, it's a minimum of 10%.
Oh, a minimum of 10%?
Yes.
Got it.
But again, SHRA, I agree with Rochelle, if we didn't need 10%, we wouldn't.
Use 10%.
We would use it 10%, we'd put it back on the project, but it is a minimum.
And it's in the legislation.
It's in the legislation, there's, yeah, SHRA.
I, I think the confusion was the City of Refuge was not aware of that legislation, and it was a surprise to them when it went through after the grant money. So, you know, I want to see this project come forward, and I know this is, you know, part one step of, of many others, so happy to be along with it.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a, just a last note, and thank you for the, the support of my colleagues and the robust conversation. I think maybe what is due after this is a conversation with the, with the developers of the City of Refuge and SHRA, just to make sure that everyone's on the same page, and sometimes there can be miscommunications, and so I just want to make sure that that's the case, but also recognize if, if it is true that, you know, someone may not, they may not want the money, then, you know, I, there's certainly a lot of other organizations that could use it, but I would be really surprised if that's the case. So, so let's move forward, and then it sounds like we, there's, there's more room for conversation, and we can always bring this back if needed.
Let's call the role on the item, please.
Thank you. Councilmember Kaplan? Councilmember Tau? Mayor Protem Talamontes? Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Maple?
Aye.
Councilmember Guetta?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Veng?
Yes, congratulations, Vice Mayor.
Mayor Steinberg?
Yes. All right, that passes. Now let's move on to the Housing Voucher HCV program, go ahead.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. My name is Mary Liz Paulson. I'm the Director of the Housing Choice Voucher Program, and I'm providing an update today on this program. I came before you last on May 7th to let you know that although the federal budget had not yet been approved, it appeared to be likely that we would not receive sufficient funds to cover the anticipated program cost projections. I'm returning to you today to provide an update about our efforts to decrease the costs and, and share with you the approved budget amounts. Just a quick recap, HUD contacted us in February to let us know that we needed to reduce program costs so that we could live within the anticipated budget amounts. Rent had been escalating, as you see here, and if they continued in the same trajectory, program costs would also increase dramatically beyond the amount of the funds anticipated to be available to us. HUD strongly advised us to begin taking measures to reduce the cost of the Housing Choice Voucher Program, like stop issuing vouchers. We began meeting with the tenants, especially those tenants who were impacted, those tenants who had vouchers, their service providers that were working with them, and community stakeholders. February was the beginning of monthly meetings with HUD, where we began reviewing updated data and looking at projections. We've started taking several different actions to follow through and reduce program costs, including starting to work with the families that had vouchers, especially those who had limited time on their vouchers. As we spoke last time, we had sent out a notice in March notifying families that when they requested an extension to their voucher, that they would get a 30-day extension. We have been working with the families and to try and provide services so that they can find housing before their voucher expires. Many of the families who had vouchers at the time had vouchers for longer than the, the six months that we're talking about, and that's because during the pandemic, we were not expiring vouchers. Since our meeting in May, we've been seeing an influx of what's called the, we call it the RIFTA, it's the Request for Tenancy Approval. This is the document that matches a tenant with a prospective landlord and an available unit. That means that voucher holders are finding units and are actually leasing up. Additionally, I've been meeting with the city, the county, and Sacramento Steps Forward, and we're working together to identify the voucher holders who are at risk of homelessness, and together working to reach out to those families to provide services. The second thing on the slide here is that we have stopped adding units to project-based voucher contracts. So we have project-based vouchers on several different complexes in town. You heard earlier in this meeting about the Central Sacramento Studios. When we have a contract with a site for project-based vouchers, they can ask for that voucher to be expanded to include additional units, and we've notified them that we don't have the vouchers available, so we will not be increasing the number of units to be subsidized at that site. We also typically issue a request for proposal for new project-based vouchers on an annual basis, and we are not planning to do that this year, again, because we do not have additional vouchers to make available. We are recognizing and honoring those commitments that we've made before now, so we have several project-based voucher sites that are under construction, or we have about 300 new units that are coming online this year in 2024, and those will continue. Additionally, as the units become vacant through turnover, we will continue to work to fill those units, so there will still be additional families who are getting housed. The third action item that we have taken is that we are stopping processing new applications, so families, so we have not continued to pull from our waiting list, for example, to issue vouchers. Now HUD was clear, there are some exceptions to this, we can still continue issuing vouchers to some of the, these programs listed here below on the slide here. So VASH is our voucher for Veterans Affairs Supportive Housing for homeless veterans. Because that is a dedicated funding, that will continue. The Foster Youth Toward Independence Initiative also is new funding, and that will continue. Shelter Plus Care is a program that helps some of the neediest, the folks who are needing most services to be able to live independently. This is not technically a voucher program, so it will continue to assist families. Additionally, additionally.
Sure. Mayor Protem, go right ahead, sorry.
Just a quick question, since we're going through the slides, go back to the other one. And for the exceptions for our Veterans Affairs Supportive Housing, do you know how many veterans have project-based vouchers now that haven't been used versus like how many more we can expect with VAS, you know, with them being the exception?
Okay, so for project-based vouchers, the way that project-based vouchers work is we make a commitment to a site, and then the families who live at that site get the benefit of the subsidy and the prorated rent. And so we don't have vouchers with project-based, or we, I'm sorry, we don't have veterans with project-based vouchers looking to lease up, they only lease when they're there. But to answer your question, how many, how many veterans may have tenant-based vouchers and are looking to lease those up, they are not at risk of losing that voucher, so they can continue to lease up, and right now we are continuing to lease, so they will continue to be able to find units and lease up.
Like, how many?
Are you asking how many?
Like a number, like, is there like 1,000, 2,000 veterans that you're working with? Like a number of?
That have, that have vouchers out looking for a unit? I don't know that number offhand. I know that it is growing because we're issuing vouchers on a daily basis.
Okay, if you can cut back and send us an email, that'd be wonderful.
Sure.
Just curious. Thank you.
Sure.
Go ahead. You got to press the button there.
Okay. Get this. Maybe, Mary Liz, though, just for context purposes, you can give us the total number of VASH vouchers that we have allocated, so that way you understand, you know, out of the 13,000, how many VASH vouchers?
Yes.
Okay.
We have over 800 right now. Some of those are already leased, but I can report to you how many are still leasing. And then, we also are applying and working with the VA to have additional, receive additional vouchers.
Okay, thank you. You phrased the question the way I needed to ask it. Thank you, LaChelle.
Very good.
Okay, please continue.
Okay, so moving on, additional action items. We are following HUD's guidance, and we are stopping issuing tenant-based vouchers to project-based families who are wanting to move. The way that this works is families who are living in a unit that has a project-based voucher can request to move. And if we have a tenant-based voucher, they receive the tenant-based voucher and move while we backfill behind the project-based vouchers. So, we don't have tenant-based vouchers, and so we are not allowing families to move with a tenant-based voucher. However, families that want to move can move without assistance, and then we will follow up with them when we have the tenant-based vouchers and offer those to families with project-based vouchers living without assistance as a priority. And then, we will continue to monitor these changes, monitor the number of families that are leased in our budget and our funds for the remainder of the year. It's important to note that the funds that we are talking about that come in to support the Housing Choice Voucher Program are allocated by Congress on an annual basis. So, when we said that we, at the time I presented in May, we did not know of our amounts that were available for the unit, because Congress allocated those in the budget that was approved on March 9th, and HUD then notified housing authorities of how much they were receiving in May. So, 2025 is a new year with a new budget cycle, and we'll see what happens then. But the changes I'm calling attention to are covering for the fiscal year, the calendar year 2024. As we have gone through these changes, we have reached out first and primarily to our program participants, who, those families who have vouchers that are looking to lease up with a voucher, and the service providers that are working with them. We also have had several community meetings or meetings where we have met with the continuum of care, with the service providers who are assisting our families, the participants themselves, project-based voucher holders, as well as the sites who are managing those project-based So, an update, we now know that we have been allocated $185 million for, again, for 2024, and this is all funds that go to landlords to provide those rental subsidies. This is about what we expected. There is a mistake on this slide. It says 25 million is available nationally. It should be 200 million. Initially, there was some discussion until the budget passed, and HUD made the allocation. We weren't sure, but the number is 200 million is available nationally. It will be, it is available to cover seven different categories. Agencies who are in shortfall is the first category. We will apply for as many opportunities as we are eligible, or we think that we might be eligible for. In fact, we have already submitted the application for additional funds to cover the shortfall. I mentioned in May that when we were identifying the families who had vouchers who were looking for units, we had identified about 175 families that had been working with agencies that serve homeless families. So, we were guessing, we were projecting that about 175 of those that we had identified were folks who may be at risk of homelessness. So, we have really focused on providing services to these 175. Since I reported in May, 32 families have leased up, 80 have submitted RIFTAs and are in process. We have 48 active, or families with active vouchers. Those are who we are focusing our attention on and really reaching out and providing services and referrals. We have a staff person who is reaching out to these families and is available for service providers and the families to call in to get help if they're looking for assistance in leasing up units. We are seeing RIFTAs come in. And as I mentioned, we are seeing about 80 of the families who are identified from that group of 175 who have submitted RIFTAs. In May, we received more RIFTAs than we have seen in the last two years. So, we are seeing, in fact, that families are finding units and are able to lease up. So, we'll continue to report on that, but all of that is very good. We have added information on our website, including some recordings for information for folks who have vouchers who are looking for units, explaining how to use that voucher, how to shop units, how to calculate whether we are going to approve the unit based on the rent and their income and so on. We are working with community partners to identify additional resources and bring these to the families that are looking for units.
Okay. Thank you. Almost, almost complete?
Next slide is conclusion. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So, just to wrap up, we have insufficient funds that we are managing within the funds available. We're focusing on keeping families housed. We're working with, taking HUD's direction. We'll continue to monitor and make adjustments as necessary.
Okay, I'm gonna, thank you. Thank you so much for the presentation. I'm going to add a little bit of context here. The issue of the potential expiration of vouchers because of the compaction in terms of the funding has become an issue, both in the city and the county. And so, what I want to add in terms of presentation is that for the last month or month or so, the city and county, and it's been Supervisor Kennedy, Chair of the Board, and myself as mayor, and I believe Vice Mayor Maple has been on a couple of the calls as well, together with the SHRA team, you, Mary Liz, and Director Dozier, the city housing staff, the county housing and homeless staff have been meeting, we've actually met for several hours, with this specific mission, because there's a lot of categories here, and certainly people who are currently housed, who have vouchers that may expire, are of issue and concern, but in terms of what I always like to refer to as Maslow's hierarchy, the greater concern are people who are unsheltered and who have expiring vouchers. And so, given that that 60-day clock for many people began running on the 19th of March, I believe it was, we have been working with SHRA, and they have agreed, and I just want to let the public know this, because it's important, to not expire any of the vouchers for people who are unsheltered, who we're still trying to work with as a multidisciplinary team to get housed. That's good news. There are other problems, one of them being, I won't call it a dispute, but at least some ambiguity around what kind of release of information form it takes for SHRA, the providers, the city and county to be able to pool all the information and the resources to be able to begin the so-called RIFTA process, right? The process by which you begin helping somebody move towards an actual housing unit. We are, together in this working group, making progress on that as well, including with Lisa Bates and Sacramento Steps Forward, and trying to build a waiver into the HMIS system. So, the minute somebody signs up for HMIS, all the waivers are signed, and then the responsible agencies don't have to worry about waiting for the permission of the individuals unsheltered, remember, before they can begin getting the help. There are about 300 people, and I'm estimating here, at issue, and we've gone, Emily Halkins out there, we've gone kind of back and forth, but about 150 people who are unsheltered who have existing vouchers. Those folks, and a number of them now are getting housing, in part because of SHRA's effort, but all of our efforts in terms of working in a much more consolidated and coordinated fashion. Now, we found out there's another category of people, about 150 people, who are unsheltered and who are high on the waiting list for vouchers. For those people, we've got the funding gap. While SHRA goes after this additional funding, and believe they're going to get it, hope they're going to get it, the city and the county and the providers then are going to surround, are going to wrap ourselves around as many of those people as possible, so that we get them indoors and get them ready for housing, because they will then have a voucher once the additional funding comes in. I know it's a little convoluted, but there's about 300 people unsheltered with either vouchers and/or on waiting lists for vouchers, that there is now an unprecedented level of collaboration and coordination, city, county, SHRA providers, to make sure that their vouchers don't expire, that they get vouchers if they're currently on the waiting list, and that we get them housed with the services that they need. And all of this speaks to, again, a broader challenge in our system, which we're beginning, again, progress overcoming, I think reflected a little bit in that point in time count again, is that we have a multitude of government agencies involved in the homeless effort. And the challenge, but the opportunity, is how do they, we get everybody with leadership and responsibility to literally sit at the same table every single week and break it down, if it's 150 people at a time, and actually work to get those people housing and the help that they need. It's getting better, and we're all working to try to break down some traditional barriers here, and it's happening in real time with the Housing Choice Vouchers. So, hopefully, 300 people are going to find themselves housed eventually because of this collaboration. I just thought it was important to add, because that's really the story behind the story. Okay. Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yeah. Thank you. That's an exciting update. I'm really glad to hear that those conversations are happening. I will say that while I appreciate the new video, there's still no information on SHRA's website or socials for people who've been getting extensions and what they need to do. I know that was a request I made back in May to say, you know, just as simple as like, hey, alert, if you have a voucher, if you're getting extensions, click here for more info, because there's a lot of confusion in the community about what that means. And that update is super exciting, that if you're on the street, that your voucher won't expire. We need to get that out, because there are people who are really giving up hope and who will never reach out, because they think that they just lost their chance to get housing. So, I really, really just have to emphasize how critical it is for you to have a super simple, at the top of the page, if you think you've been impacted by the extension change, please call us at this number, because it's very passive. We're reaching out to people with the mailing information we have for them, we're reaching out through the service providers. There is no way for them to contact you on this website that I can find, and I just think that's really important. And it should be pinned to the top of your Facebook. If you think you've been impacted by this change, please contact us, so that we can try to help you find housing, like, just even if it's just that simple.
Additionally, residents have access to a portal, and that's actually where they would go to request the extension, and that's where we are interacting on that. But I will follow through with.
Okay, because I assume that they know they need to log on to the portal, and that there's information in the portal for them. And so, even if it was just a simple blurb that says, hey, log on to this portal, or like, what if I'm in house and I lost my login information, you know, like, a simple phone number. And I know that you're, whenever you post a phone number publicly anywhere, you risk thousands of people calling you, and I can only imagine that's the same for this. But I'm glad to hear that there's a phone number set up for a staff person whose job it is to help these folks, but that is not anywhere. And if I'm on the street, and I assume that keeping paper documents is difficult, who do I call to make sure that I know what my status is and how to access some of these programs? Like, just something that simple.
Councilmember, I just want to reiterate this, because this is so important, and this is one of the things that's coming out of these conversations, is that portals and even phone numbers are not enough. This is hand-to-hand. This is case management, this is DCR, these are county outreach teams, these are HART teams, this is SHRA, this is everyone getting in the room and accounting for every individual that we know or find out through a provider or otherwise has a voucher and is unsheltered.
Yes.
That's what this is about. Not a telephone number, not a portal. Those are necessary, but they are wholly insufficient. It's people, it's person-to-person.
I really appreciate that, because it is what works best. I just think that, in general, there's nothing on the website that says who I call if I'm not sure, and if I move, like, if I don't have the same access to the PO box that I had before. So, that's all I'm really hoping for, in addition to what you're doing, which is very important work, is like, something public that explains what this means and who they call if they're having problems.
Good, okay. Sorry to interrupt.
It's okay.
Okay.
That was a good interruption.
Councilmember Kaplan?
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor Maple, and others who have been meeting, you know, because I appreciate that context, because it wasn't included in the report and in update. So, well, I want to appreciate and thank Mayor and Vice Mayor for following up on this. It was something I brought up before, and I appreciate the presentation. But I also discussed last time my concern for the lack of information in the report, and I am disappointed that, again, like, the data you spoke about with the RIFTA, you know, of 175, and I think I caught 32 leased and another someone, like, that information is, you spoke it, but it is not in the report. It is not transparent of what's moving forward and how we're, you know, our progress on this, which the public deserves to know, we as councilmembers deserve to know. The report mentions that there's a project funding shortfall in 2024, again, but there's no breakdown on what those numbers are. I had requested that a budget be attached. I do not see that here today. Again, I just want to express my disappointment on the lack of transparency in regards to this. One of the things we brought up at the last meeting was further request on information for Request for Tenancy Approval Process, and how we're trying to streamline it, because, you know, you've mentioned, my staff asked a question that, one, you've been able to help in six days, and another, you're in 60 days. You know, what is that process and understanding, and how we can be, you know, more streamlined in that process and transparent for those going through it? You know, I know we need to do more as a city and a county and SHRA, working together, but I think we are missing the context for me as a councilmember of, I had asked for a more comprehensive report, but I guess, you know, that wasn't something that, you know, was included, and I am disappointed in that. You also referenced that there are current staffing and training constraints. Can you tell me what the current staffing shortage gap is and what the average timeline is from when staff is hired and training is complete?
We currently have, are in the process of bringing on 10 additional folks. They are arriving this week, and the training, while they are in training, they will be producing, but the training process is about six weeks.
Okay. And then, SHRA currently has two landlord liaisons. What data is available to see how frequently are they're having to intervene and how many cases they are taking on a weekly basis?
At this point, we've given out the email address and the phone number for the landlord liaisons to the service providers and in our public meetings, including last meeting. At this point, they have had one person who has reached out and contacted them, but they are doing outbound phone calls to the folks that I mentioned, whose vouchers are expiring or close to expiring.
And then, for those that are expiring or close to expiring, I know they were given notice that everything was, that their voucher was going to go away. What are you finding? Are the barriers to why it took telling them their voucher was going to go away, to why we're now getting people in and going through the RIFTA process?
We, we, once we issue the voucher and the families go out and find a unit, we typically don't hear from the family until they submit a RIFTA or until they are asking for an extension. So, I have not, and typically, our housing is not interacting with them. However, we do have the staff person that we mentioned that are doing the outbound calls, and they are working to address them on a one-to-one basis. I don't have the information for all of them as to what their issues are, but as I mentioned, we are working not only with the families, but the families, those that we've identified are also working with the service provider. So, we are working with the service provider agency as well as the family. as the family, in addressing that and extending the voucher, so that it doesn't expire while they are looking for units.
So, Mayor, that may be something, as you're having these meetings, of if you guys can look into it, but that conversation, is there a theme of what tends to be a barrier for people, you know, once they get their voucher, to getting into housing? Is there a common theme, and how can we address that? Because I think that data is missing of why many may have held on to it for so many years, but now that the voucher's going away, what's making them move faster, or what was the barrier in the?
Yeah. Some of it's housing supply, some of it, obviously, that's the obvious one, but some of it is our building on the partnership agreements and all the other things to really everyone out of their silos. And that's not one, or the, it's everybody, right? It's the city, it's the county, it's SHRA, it's all of us. It's like, we're all, we're all one team here, and it's love the idea of everyone sitting in the room together. I know that meetings take time, but really, to, that's case management. You know, I was talking to somebody today about the whole challenge with implementation of the new Behavioral Health Services Act, and one of the real shortages we have in this whole field is case management. Well, we can't be case managers day-to-day, I know, as government agencies, but we can be the case managers together to make sure that everybody is getting the path and actually into the housing, and that's what we're calling for here.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks. Thank you so much, Mary Liz. Appreciate it. We have one more item.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Whitney Hinton again, with SHRA. This report requests authorization to provide $2.65 million in additional funding to the Capital Park Hotel project. First, I would like to give a quick overview of what has happened to development costs over the last couple of years. These issues have not only affected Capital Park, but other projects as well. I should point out that SHRA staff, consisting of architects, engineers, and other construction professionals, review and approve all construction budgets prior to recommending funding. Common development issues we have been seeing include, there has been an increase in overall construction costs. A construction budget contingency at the outset of the project typically is 5% to 10% of the construction budget, is usually sufficient to cover unexpected increases. But this has not been the case recently. Costs have far exceeded what was anticipated over two or three years ago. Even after COVID, there are supply disruptions, which are causing delays and longer construction times. Equipment orders such as electrical switch gears are on backorder and could take months longer than expected to receive. These longer construction timelines means paying more interest on construction loans. Even more concerning is variable interest rates have gone up considerably, causing a huge cost increase. In January, when we last accepted application for financing, five previously funded affordable housing projects requested additional funding. I can't tell you how unusual that is. When reviewing the funding applications, we look at various factors before considering additional SHRA funding. First, we look at the increased costs, increased project costs, allow developers to receive additional tax credit equity, so we made sure that the developer is leveraging these additional funds. Then, we ensure the developer is borrowing as much as possible. Rents have increased since the project's original financing to allow for additional debt. Then, ensure the developer has decreased their developer fee by contributing as much as possible to the project. With that general overview, I would like to present information specific to Capital Park. As a reminder, Capital Park Hotel is located at 9th and L Streets, a rehabilitation of a historic single-room occupancy hotel into 134 studio permanent supportive housing units that began in December of 2020. SHRA previously provided approximately $20 million to the project. In addition, the project received $9.7 million of No Place Like Home. Received 9.7 of No Place Like Home funds, low-income housing tax credits, and historic tax credits. There are project-based vouchers awarded to all units. Mercy Housing is a developer, management company, and resident service provider. In addition, the county provides case management to the No Place Like Home residents. Construction is now complete with residents occupying 80 of the units. The remaining 54 units cannot be occupied until the permanent electrical source is installed, specifically a switchgear component that has been delayed for many months and has caused $5 million in added interest expenses to the project. It is anticipated that the switchgear will be delivered and installed by October, at which point, the remaining units will be leased. To cover these unanticipated interest costs, staff requests authority to allocate $2.65 million of CDBG and HOPA funds to the project. Mercy Housing will be responsible for the remaining cost overruns. And representatives from Mercy and myself are here to address any questions you may have.
This has been a long journey.
Okay.
And it continues. But I think a worthy journey, an important journey. Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yeah, this journey started before I even came into office.
Yes.
So, really excited and hopeful that this is the last time that we need to do this. I'm sure the Mercy team is as well, so that we can get people in there and close the book on what should be, it's a beautiful project at a really important location. So, I'm happy to move the item.
Thank you. Moved in second. Did I see no other testimony or members up? All in favor, please say aye. Aye, oppose, abstain. Thank you all very much. That concludes the agenda for the Housing Authority. It was, one speaker not on the agenda. Okay. Mr. Worthy. Then, Mr. Geta has a comment.
I will say, before Mr. Worthy gets up, we will.
That's Mac.
Excuse me one second, Mac. After this, we'll go to closed session, let's say, at 10 minutes to four.
That's not Mr. Worthy, that's Mac. Okay. Will you put this up on?
Oh, okay.
How, how did three black families get in that project in front of my house at one time? All the garbage we had today. I need that explained. But it's all right. It's all right. Race equity is expressed. This is why I continue to raise block grants and housing. This is why, 1981, I put it in front of the people in my neighborhood. Been right here. Where have you grown? Where have the city grown? You cannot let a government spend your money in Villasity. They've never built a city in America. Wake up, people. Get some business head folks in here.
All righty. Councilmember Geta.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under Housing Authority, board member comments, this is for the director and whoever the appropriate staff is. It's come to my concern that the Federal Housing and Urban Development Agency has brought up some audits or concerns of the agency, and I'd like to get a briefing on what the details of those concerns are. Appreciate. Thank you.
Who's raised that? I'm sorry, I didn't hear who raised that. HUD, okay. Very good. Okay.
I'd like to finish on that, too.
Okay.
I'll brief everyone.
Let's get briefing to everyone. Is there anything further to come before the Housing Authority? If not, we are adjourned. We will go to closed session at 10 to four, and full council at 5, with the potential of starting a few minutes late. Thank you.